[S01]I'm [S01]Iñárritu [S01]Chetin,[S01] El Hesitero en Guahon is back from recess. Good morning colleagues. We -- it looks like there are several members here. The vice speaker is here,[S01] Senator Barnett is here,[S01] and Senator Jesse Luján is here, but that's -- together with me,[S01] that's not enough for a quorum. So unfortunately,[S01] we're going to have to wait for a quorum. So it will be in risk to us until we have enough for a quorum. Recession.
I'm Iñárritu Chetin,[S02] El Hesitero en Guahon is back from recess. Good morning colleagues. We -- it looks like there are several members here. The vice speaker is here,[S02] Senator Barnett is here,[S02] and Senator Jesse Luján is here, but that's -- together with me,[S02] that's not enough for a quorum. So unfortunately,[S02] we're going to have to wait for a quorum. So it will be in risk to us until we have enough for a quorum. Recession.
Y minuto 37, el Ayuntamiento de Guam se ha retirado de la repertorio. Nosotras habíamos reunido esta mañana, pero no tuvimos un pleno. Ahora tenemos un pleno y vamos a proceder. Ayer dejamos las motiones. ¿Hay otras motiones? Si no, estamos en concurrencia legislativa en nuestra agenda. Y reconozco al Asistente Mayor de la mayoría. Vamos a recoger una repertorio de una minuta. Estamos de vuelta de repertorio. Gracias por su paciencia. Estamos de vuelta en concurrencia legislativa. Senador Canata, usted es reconocido en concurrencia legislativa.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Infraestructura Económica. High School, Servicios Deportivos, Self-Determinación, Historia, Preservación, Hacienda, Publica, y la construcción de la Guama. La nominación de Romeo A. Angel para ser miembro de la Junta Directiva de la Corporación de Hacienda de Guam. Con la recomendación de que confirme.
En la motion para poner la nominación de Romeo A. Angel en el tercer escrito, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva.
Gracias, Madam Presidente.
Mayor de la mayoría, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Salud, tierra, Justicia y Cultura. La nominación de Gregory J. Cruz para ser miembro de la Respiratoria de Terapia. Representante de la Junta Directiva de la Alrededor de la salud de Guam. Examinadores con la recomendación de reportar solo.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Gregory J. Cruz en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Mayor de la mayoría, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Salud, tierra, Justicia y Cultura. La nominación de Lisa D. Flores, M.D., para ser miembro de la Comisión de Compensación Criminales con la recomendación de que confirme.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Lisa D. Flores, M.D., en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Mayor de la mayoría, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Salud, tierra, Justicia y Cultura. La nominación de Jeffrey John B. Ibanez para ser miembro de la Comisión de Trabajo de la tierra con la recomendación de que confirme.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Jeffrey John P. Ibanez en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? ¿Hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Senador Canata, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Infraestructura Económica. High School, Servicios Deportivos, Self-Determinación, Historia, Preservación, Hacienda, Publica, y la construcción de la Guama. La nominación de Abner V. Mariano, P.E., R.C., D.D., L.E.E.D., A.P., B.D., C. Para ser miembro de la Representante Profesional de Ingeniería Registrada de la Junta Directiva de la Guama con la recomendación de que confirme. Gracias, Madam Presidente.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Abner V. Mariano en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Senador Perez, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Enfermedad, Reveniente y Taxación, Labor, Procedimiento, Estadística, Investigación y Planificación. La nominación de Kathleen D. Moreland para ser miembro de la Junta Directiva de la Agencia de Protección de la Enfermedad de Guam. Junta Directiva con la recomendación de que confirme.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Kathleen D. Moreland en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Vuelvo a Senador Canata, usted es reconocido.
Una última vez. Gracias, Madam Presidente. Madam Presidente, me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Infraestructura Económica. High School, Servicios Deportivos, Self-Determinación, Historia, Preservación, Hacienda, Publica, y la construcción de la Guama. La nominación de Gustavo A. Morales para ser miembro de la Junta Directiva de la Corporación de Hacienda de Guam. Con la recomendación de que confirme. Gracias, Madam Presidente.
Sí, señor presidente. En la nominación de Gustavo A. Morales para estar en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Asistente Mayor de la mayoría, senador Sanog, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Salud, tierra, Justicia y Cultura. La nominación de Ronald F. Eclavea para ser miembro de la Junta Directiva de la tierra con la recomendación de que confirme.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Ronald F. Eclavea en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva. Mayor de la mayoría, senador Sanog, usted es reconocido.
Gracias, Madam Presidente. Me he movido a poner en el archivo de votación del Comité de Salud, tierra, Justicia y Cultura. La nominación de Anita F. Orlino para ser miembro de la Junta Directiva de la tierra con la recomendación de que reportar solo.
En esa motion para poner la nominación de Anita Orlino en el archivo de votación, ¿hay alguna objeción? No hay objeción, ese movimiento lleva.
Presidente Turlo, usted es reconocido.
Sí, señor presidente. Quisiera mover la apoyada de la jueza Sean Edward Brown para ser juez magistrado de la Corte Superior de Guam en la agenda o en el archivo de votación, y me gustaría hablar sobre esa motion.
Por favor.
Sí, señor presidente. Un juez magistrado es el puente al sistema criminal. Sus deberes incluyen, pero no son limitados a presidir sobre las primeras apariciones de los defendants criminales y arruinas en casos criminales. Cambiar o modificar la pena, ordenar condiciones de liberación previa a la trial, tomar pidesiones, incluyendo aceptar pidesiones culpables en casos de mal comportamiento, sentenciar el mal comportamiento y entrar en juicio. Las decisiones que toman tendrán un impacto directo en la seguridad y la salud de una comunidad así como en las correcciones, correcciones y rehabilitación de un offender. Así que es vital que una persona que sirve en esta capacidad, juez magistrado, esté comprometida con la seguridad de la comunidad y con justicia y justicia. Y es vital que también sean imparciales y diligentes en el desempeño de sus deberes. Y en mi opinión esto incluye estar abiertos y dispuestos a abordar los huecos en el sistema que son un impedimento para lograr estos compromisos. Durante el hearing público de este apoyo, pregunté a la jueza Brown sobre cómo manejar las condiciones de liberación previas a la trial o la detención de offenders repetidos. La jueza Brown expresó su compromiso con un enfoque que incluye en consideración los hechos presentados, la historia criminal de una persona y el背景, la gravedad del caso, el nivel de peligro para la comunidad así como los recursos y tratamientos disponibles en nuestra comunidad. También declaró su voluntad de hacer sugerencias de mejora para la evaluación y los recursos necesarios. Y esto me da esperanza porque sigue, parece, un desafío continuo y un compromiso de mi parte, este comité y toda la legislatura del pasado tres legislaturas. and our entire legislature over the past three legislatures in holding public hearings, meetings, and discussions, and passing laws to push for adequate risk assessment tools, treatment, and rehabilitation, and more appropriate sentences where necessary to protect our community against repeat offense. During the hearing, the committee also received overwhelming testimony in support of Attorney Brown, from the Chief Justice, the Attorney General of Guam, notable members of the Guam Bar Association, including the President, family members of Attorney Brown. And all the testimonies submitted attested to Attorney Brown's commitment to justice, fairness, hard work, as well as his rootedness in this community. He is the current prosecutor for violent crimes with the Attorney General's Office and has done this for many years. He served under this and previous attorneys general. And he has many years of experience that he will be bringing to the court if he is confirmed. I believe he will be one of the few judges serving in the court at this time who've ever served as a prosecutor. Of course, I think this will be a great loss to the prosecutorial division of the Attorney General's Office, which is still in need of lawyers, and especially ones with this type of experience and experience on Guam and with Guam trials and violent crime on Guam. So I'm sad about that loss, but this is another angle of the justice system in which he will be serving. And I'm happy that victims seeking justice will have him, hopefully, as a magistrate judge, to render decisions in their cases. This goes as well for those who serve in law enforcement who really look to the court system, the Attorney General's Office, to really back them up and make sure that their work does not go in vain. So it's with great hope and assurance that I ask my colleagues to support the appointment of Attorney Sean Edward Brown to serve as a magistrate judge of the Superior Court of Guam. And I'd like to thank all of those who testified on his behalf that I believe their testimony was very helpful to give us a good, full picture of this person who's being nominated to such an important position in our justice system. And this is, hopefully, a good move in increasing justice for Guam. Sis, just a moment. So again, I move his appointment, his nomination be placed on the voting file.
On the motion, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the motion? If no one else wishes to speak, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
All right. I believe we've concluded with all the legislative concurrent items, and we will now move on to the second reading file. The first bill under second reading is Bill Number 124-37-COR. This is sponsored by Sabina Flores-Perez and others. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to accept the substitute version of Bill 124-37 onto the agenda.
So this bill subversion, according to the clerks, had been placed on the drive. Senator Perez, on your motion. So the copies have been passed out. They're also available on the drive. Your motion to sub the bill, did you want to explain that or just move forward? There's a motion to substitute the bill. Copies have been passed out. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Oh, sorry. Senator San Agustin, on the motion to substitute the bill.
Madam Speaker, I have no objection to substituting it, but it's read as the bill has amended. So would it have to say substituted?
Yeah.
And that's the only thing I'm questioning, okay? Replacing it, I have no objection. Because it looks like a clean bill, but it's the proper verbiage.
So the clerks have insured it says, "as amended by the committee," and then further on it says, "and further substituted on the floor." So that's the version we should be looking at? On that motion, seeing no objection? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you may proceed on Bill Number 124 as substituted.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place a substitute version of Bill 124-37 onto the third reading file and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill 124-37 proposes to add a new section pertaining to the insurance applications that authorizes DRT to utilize the Uniform Certificate of Authority application for insurance companies to establish or renew their license in order to do business on Guam. The Uniform Certificate Authority Application will assist DRT in transitioning licensing of insurance companies from a manual, cumbersome, paper-based system to one that is standardized, centralized, and automated that can promote time savings by providing a consolidated platform that encapsulates the administrative requirements, which can facilitate the application process and ensuring a required information and documents are included upon submission. This can also aid in reducing the time needed for review and approval and administrative costs by both DRT and insurance companies. Currently, all 50 states and Puerto Rico utilize this Uniform Certificate of Authority through the National Association of Insurance Commissioners. This eliminates the need to file different applications in different formats and registering in a state other than the state of incorporation. Each uniform state still performs its own independent review of each application and can require additional authorizations prior to approval. The Uniform Certificate of Authority process also provides a means to access essential information by DRT prior to granting licensure and an automated process for insurance companies to submit their annual reports that were required of licensure. According to DRT's annual insurance reports, the Uniform Certificate of Authority application is one of the laws that has been recommended by the insurance commissioners since 2018 to protect consumers. Moreover, this online platform is developed by the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, which is the U.S. standard-setting and regulatory-support organization created and governed by the chief insurance regulators from the 50 states, the District of Columbia, and the five U.S. territories. Moreover, the platform is tailored to the legal and administrative requirements of each state or territory. Substitute Bill 124 incorporates feedback from the public hearing to retain the requirement to publish in the newspaper by an insurance company seeking to do business on Guam to ensure maximum transparency. It also clarifies that the commissioner maintains decision-making authority to grant licenses. Bill 124-37 was created in close collaboration with the Department of Revenue and Taxation, which again is aligned with the National Association of Insurance Commissioners, which is, again, is a standard-setting regulatory-support organization for all states and territories in the District of Columbia. I ask for my colleagues' support for this important measure to assist DRT in modernizing the application process and for those insurance companies seeking licensure which can save time and money and also protect consumers. Sis, just a moment.
Sis, just a moment. Senator, on the motion on Bill 124, is there any other senator who would like to speak? Senator San Agustin, you're recognized. Then Senator, or Senator Blas, you're recognized. Minority Leader. He's yodeling.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, I'm looking at the language that are in this bill and... For all, you know, intents and purposes, full disclosure, I am a licensed insurance producer and broker, transact business on Guam. I do have a brokerage firm, and I had to go through a process just over the summer to be able to renew my licenses and my brokerage. And, you know, Madam Speaker, I don't know whether this is a day late or a dollar short, but I'm just wondering why this legislation is necessary when this is already mandated? This is in order for us to renew our licenses. We had to do this already. And so I'm just wondering whether we, in this case, was the cart put before the horse or did the horse leave the stable before it could be attached to the cart? And... They're still running into problems with the licensure based on this. And so I don't know whether to support or not to support this bill, but I'm looking at what it's saying here and... It goes to question, okay, so what were we made to go through? And why was it mandated? It said it was mandated for us to go through. And then I see this language, you know, that says, "Oh, okay, yeah, now we've got to put this in." You went through it and... But now we've got to put it in statute. I'm just a little confused here. So I don't know if the author of the legislation is aware of that, but certainly would like to yield to, you know, find out her knowledge or her understanding of why this legislation was necessary if they're already doing it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sis, just a moment.
I'll wait for her.
All right. Will the Senator yield to the questions? Senator Perez.
Okay. So if I understand the question correctly, is because the practice is being done, why is it needed to be codified? Is that the question?
Yeah. I mean, so what were we made to go through? Not just this year, but in the past, in last year as well?
Okay.
And because certainly I got here is, okay, so in codifying this now for those individuals and for those licenses that were not renewed because they did not follow this, do they now have recourse?
Yeah. So my understanding is the commissioner can prescribe a form of application. And so I think what this represents is DRT's overall efforts to modernize and codify that process of modernization. And I think it's kind of comforting to hear that it does support what's being practiced. The other important point about this bill is I know there were questions during the public hearing at the time about this NAIC organization, right? The National Association of Insurance Commissioners. And so we really wanted to make it clear that we are not relegating or delegating any decision-making authority to them and that the decision-making process or the decision-making authority still lies with the commissioner. So I think that's the importance of this bill, is to provide clarification. Thank you.
I appreciate the response, but I beg to differ with regard to any relegation of authority because it might, it was my experience and the experience of many other agents that had to renew, that once that was placed in and everything, your license came from NAIC. Your license came from them. It was, as a matter of fact, your license number is now your, basically, the number given to you by NAIC. And the formality was just that Revenue and Tax received a copy of it. But more so, as it was mandated, for lack of a better term, and there were some individuals that... And it was, trust me, it was initially, it was a very confusing process, that there were some individuals that may not have been able to renew their certifications or their licenses and in some cases either was not able to receive the renewal but also, but may have also had to pay a penalty. So my concern here is whether or not, in codifying this now, saying, okay, this is what it should, this is what it should be from now on, what was it before? And what of those individuals that were penalized for not following it if it wasn't mandated by statute?
Are you asking the senator to yield again?
Yes.
With the senator, with the sponsor yield?
I would need to follow up with DRT on that. So give me a moment if you can. I can follow up.
Please. Okay. I think it's important for that clarification, basically so I can determine whether or not I'm going to have to, I can support this bill.
All right. Take a one-minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Blas had yielded to Senator Perez. Senator Perez, would you yield to the question?
Yes, I do, Madam Speaker. So, in speaking with DRT, she made, they made the distinction, the Administrator made the distinction, that there is an online process for the brokers themselves, but not for the companies. So the company's online process application has not been implemented. And so in regards to fees, the only, there's, in the law, fees have been, what is it? Fines have been, I guess, implemented for late filers, is my understanding, in regards to the, the application for individuals that are practicing insurance. But this is for the companies themselves. Yeah. I hope that answers it.
I understand that this is for the companies and, you know, I had to go through the certificate of authority for being the general agent for a certain company to represent them, which is why I'm saying, I already had to go through this. And so if it was mandated last year and this year, what is the necessity for this? Thirdly, I mean, more importantly, if you look at the effective date, it says August 1st, 2025. If this is going to be effective August 1st, 2025, your license has to be renewed before July 1st, 2025. So there's a 30-day gap between what will be required and what, and will that cause some confusion? Again, you know, I don't mean to say that it's not necess, I'm just wondering whether, that, I'm, I'm, I don't say that I don't support this, it's just that it's already being done, but then also, when you put your effective date as 30 days after, you know, what is mandatorily, the renewable date? How would that affect obtaining the certificate of authority? And do they have to jump through a second hoop 30 days after they already jumped through the first one? So, I guess the question to the author would be if she can yield. No, and that said, okay, and I recognize you want to put the codify this, but so that there's no, no confusion, do we want to be able to move then this effective date concurrent with what will be the mandatory date for renewal, instead of August 1st to July 1st?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Yes, absolutely, and I appreciate the questions. So, the bill initially had August 1st, 2024, since we passed that date, I, I was thinking of giving implementation time and training time, but I'm open to changing this date to effective upon enactment, so that way, you know, there is time until, the run-up, until the next renewal time, which is in July.
Yeah, because all the licenses have been renewed already.
Okay.
Okay? And so if you're gonna make this effective now, even if you make it effective today, it won't be, it won't really bother until July of next year.
Okay, I appreciate, definitely would, could make an amendment, yeah, to that.
So I'll go ahead and let her to, okay, make the effective date. Senator, Senator Perez, you want me to make it? Okay. So, Madam Speaker, with regard to amending Section 4 effective date, this act shall be effective upon enactment?
All right, there's a, a motion. Is there any objection to entertaining this amendment without it being in writing?
It's just striking out August 1st, 1 to 2025.
All right, so seeing no objection, we will proceed. So the amendment is to strike out the words August 1, 2025 in Section 4. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on that amendment? If not, is, would you, is there any objection to that amendment? Seeing no objection, that amendment passes. Sajid Masri, Senator Blas. Is there any other Senator who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Sinagstein, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I'm just curious for the author, if she can yield to the question, Madam Speaker. The question would be, what exists today that needs to change the law? Because I know that on the original bill, there's a lot of other sections that were struck out, but I guess that's not struck out. We're working already with the National Associated Insurance Commissioners, and basically, what does Guam do? Receive the application, it's green light, it's gone, and then it has, unless a different application form is prescribed by the Commissioner, what is the Commissioner gonna prescribe if it's done by the, the national level that gets their, all their support from the national? So maybe the author can yield to that, because I want to make sure there's, there's relevance to this, because, I mean, what are we paying the Commissioner for?
Is there, with the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I do yield to the question, and thank you for the question. So currently, they are all manual, paper-based applications. And so that is pretty cumbersome, as you know, with DRT, that, that is an issue, especially, you know, if they have to retain these records, and that's one of the challenges they face, is overcoming this manual basis. It's made redundant by technology, and it just makes sense to modernize this process. So it, it's gonna replace a cumbersome, manual-based application process.
Madam Speaker, I worked at Reven and Tax. I understand the, the paper trail, because why they establish the, the scanning of income tax and they file it digitally. So the issue and excuse for insurance folks to say that it's too cumbersome? Doesn't cost that much money to buy a scanner? You're not buying a big, a gigantic scanner, you're buying one of the small scanners. And then I'm only concerned is that, because the Commissioner, you know, the amendment, unless a, a different application form is prescribed, what is he gonna prescribe when it's already done nationally level? That's number one. Number two, the applicants here in Guam, they get, they get their application process approved, hand a copy to them, really? Scan, pour for vote, get some digitize it? The authority to grant or renew certificate? How do you have, you have any authority to grant or renew when it's done nationally level? I, I'm just trying to understand what is going on in the insurance side of those? Because I, I read the testimony, great, they all support it. And they support nothing. When I read it, I'm just trying to understand, and I want to support the bill because it's supposed to help Reven and Tax. But when I look at this, the insurance and banking section, it's not a big section, okay? I worked next door to them when I was there. They're not a big section, but they play a major role, because they deal with insurance. But I'm just trying to understand the, the impact, otherwise, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not gonna vote for them, for the bill, but I'm just saying, throws a puzzle in my mind about what is going on at, at insurance and banking? Because you need this to do your job? You need this to call the national office and tell them to give you a copy? You need this for them to give you digitally when they provide a lot of service to Guam? I know that for a fact. I talked to my colleague, who's also an insurance broker. Well, that stuff is digitized to begin with. And if it's ready to digitize, I'm just reading the other amendment, authority to grant, renew a certificate of authority to transact insurance business in Guam shall remain solely the Commissioner. Maybe the author can ask, what role do we play with insurance in Guam? Because if we're gonna decide, then how does the national get involved if we determine if their application is good for Guam? I'm, I'm just curious, I don't know. Is, is there application with the national worthy or something, or? Because if they're not, then let it be, let it be known that we can tell you if your certificate is worthy when, when you apply from the national, then we tell you on Guam? Sorry, but we're not accepting it? I'm just curious. And it said the crime of submission of a national applicant shall not because true to confer any decision-making authority. Just a question. Other than that, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sajid Masri, Senator. On the bill, Senator Taiti, you're recognized.
Sajid Masri, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I stand in full support of, of this legislation. At first, I was very skeptical, skeptical when I went to the public hearing and asked several questions, so why do we need something like this? Doesn't Guam oversee their own insurance regulations and, and applications? And it was brought to my attention that the, that the NAIC is actually an organization that assists over 50 states and territories when it comes to providing guidelines, the latest rules and regulations, and most especially to help with data, data banking. Now, not to say that Guam doesn't have its own data system, but they incorporate a lot of information on these applications that our good minority leader had explained, he just went through the process. And two, I was skeptical, why are we having, have to pay a fee for this application, as well as paying a fee to the insurance company, I mean, Insurance Commissioner? And then I found out that the banking insurance also pays a dues, a yearly dues to the NAIC. And I guess this dues, like most organizations that have information and data, that's gonna be very helpful to us, it's, it's important to have. But what's important to have, too, is the assistance of the data that they collect to provide to Reven Tax. I, I think that is very helpful, especially if anybody hacks into any information, that there is another, an alternative, a substitute area of finding that information in case it gets lost. You know, there's, and we all know what's happening in cybersecurity land, so it's good to have that extra protection. My concern was, how much power did the NAIC have over Guam when accepting, or if, when the applications are filled out, do they have the authority to deny an applicant? And according to Reven Tax Commissioner Santos, absolutely not. They still have that control as to who receives the renewals or to receive a license to practice on Guam. One of the things that were mentioned there was, and I just wanted to read from someone with the, from the Insurance Agency of Guam, well, actually, they're called, let me pull this up, Insurance Association of Guam, President Raymond Schnebel, said that he's been working, the, the agencies have been working, not agencies, I'm sorry, insurance companies have been working with Reven Tax. You know, they're, and this is one of the areas they wanted to provide services, and of course, this was also approved by the, the IAG, which is the Insurance Association of Guam. And the Insurance Association has been working closely with the Insurance Commissioner's office over the last several years to improve insurance industry in the following areas, safeguarding the interest of insured and beneficiaries. And I thought that, that's, that's great, because most of the time, we're finding ourselves, you know, providing QC's and other opportunities for insurance companies when we need to have some kind of protection, the insured. I mean, right now, we're seeing, since Typhoon Marwa, we're finding out that our insurance premiums have skyrocketed. We're also finding out that the issues with trying to get liability only for vehicles, it's very difficult to get. In fact, some insurance companies have already put out letters saying that we will no longer insure vehicles just for liability. So it's good to know that, you know, our interest, the insured interest is, is taken to heart. Also maintaining a fair, safe, stable insurance market, ensuring the financial stability of insurance companies, especially local chartered companies, increasing the standards and reputation of insurance professionals, providing the efficiency and costs of insurance regulatory environment, and reducing bureaucracy for both sides, the insurance professionals and the insurance regulators. And like I said, Madam Speaker, I think that the assistance that we get from them, the NAIC, is a benefit to this island. But then again, you know, Guam is very different from other jurisdictions. If anybody has their fair share of natural disasters, from typhoons to earthquake, I mean, we get our fair share. So any information and data that can assist our island is important. So any information and data that can assist our island is important. And I I I thank the author, you know, to ensure that we get every kind of assistance we can on our island and ask that that I be co-sponsor to this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator who would like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then Senator Barnett, you're recognized on the bill.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker, and Manana Sidoos to the people of Guam and my colleagues. Good morning. A rise in support of the bill. Didn't really understand a lot of the process with the Uniform Certificate of Authority application, but definitely trust in the author and the testimony that was provided during the public hearing. It was supportive testimony from the Director of Reven Tax, as well as the insurance adjusters of Guam, with the Director of Reven Tax providing a testimony. The following, "We're in support of the bill. It establishes a uniform certificate of authority licensing process in line with the National Association of Insurance Commissioners program. It will establish uniformity in licensing and among all states. Guam is a member of NAIC and works very closely with them." Favorable testimony also from IAG. And the Uniform Certificate of Authority application process, according to my research, I've always got to research these bills from Senator Perez because they're very thorough, detailed and crafted with a lot of thought. It's a process that's designed to allow insurers to file copies of the same application for admission in numerous states. So really, this is is nothing more than a form change. And I support it. I don't have an insurance company, I have no interest in the insurance industry, but I know a good bill when I see one. So Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sidoos Massey, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator San Nicholas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I I'm kind of like on the fence with this measure. I I think this is like a protectionist kind of measure, protecting only insurance businesses that exist on Guam. I don't know, like, for example, maybe GEICO might want to practice or sell insurance on Guam, which would probably lower insurance for just about everybody. I want to ask the author if a larger, more, a larger insurance company would like to come into Guam, would they have to apply for this process?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
So I guess I believe the question is, would a foreign company, foreign company meaning a insurance company that is not incorporated in Guam, but incorporated in one of the 50 states and territories and the District of Columbia wants to do business on Guam, would they have to go through this process? And so by this bill would require it not only of foreign companies, but also domestic domestic companies, the ones that are incorporated here in Guam, as well as alien companies, companies that are incorporated in a different country. So it's it's it it would level the plate, it would basically require it of all companies. And so this is one of the things that I was very careful with in in crafting this bill was to ensure that there wasn't any bias. In the original bill, it could be construed as possible bias. So I wanted to be clear when I crafted the subsection A that it applies to all applicants. And the part where it says unless a different application form is prescribed, so again, that is improvement upon the original language. Because and also to give some sort of flexibility, should the DRT may need more time to get this implemented, but being that they seem to be able to implement things quickly and I'm I'm open to even striking that as well to ensure that this is that all applicants will be treated equally. So yeah, I'm very cautious about and conscious about any biases. So what this and that's the whole point of the uniform application because companies that want to do business in Guam have a checklist. So if you look online, the NAIC website, it's very clear.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think that suffices. I think it's a special interest.
Senator, Senator San Nicholas.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can I continue?
Yes, please.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you.
If you look at the checklist, there are basically a list of items that need to be submitted in the application process. So it's very clear. And so the applicant would know definitely what documents are missing. And so what we're seeing, these foreign companies, these foreign insurance companies who have agents here, they off agents have to always go back and forth, right? There's a lot of duplication of unnecessary efforts to get all the documents in. And so this would save time and money. So it is an improvement. It's a it's a form of modernization. It's an improvement in the process and it it's not, yeah, basically, it gives businesses a clear idea of what is needed to apply versus what currently exists. It's a little bit more hands-on, manual, and especially if you're a business from afar, you don't have that luxury, right, of coming here every time? So it's it could be even, it could basically prevent businesses from doing business in some ways. So it's it lives a clear idea. But also to also, I would like to add that, you know, Guam is in full control over who gets licensed, right? So depending if these requirements are met, and it's very clear in insurance law what the requirements are. And so, yeah, it's does not, I think it, the evidence or the information and the process is very well vetted from many many of the states here. So that characterization that it is obstructionist, or I forget what the term was, is does not quite meet those, it doesn't support that that conclusion.
Sidoos Massey, Senator. Senator San Nicholas, you have the floor.
So a company like GEICO, some other company in the states that that sells insurance at a really, really tremendous discount and would probably save insurance purchasers here on Guam would would, you know, I think it, I think this is a tricky bill saying, oh, we want to put it in, you know, electronic form, but I think there's far more to this bill than what we actually are seeing. And I think it's a it stymies or restricts free enterprise and thereby, you know, helping make things expensive on this island. And I think it is, I cannot support this bill. It's anti, it's anti-competition and it 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 gives too much authority to the to the commissioner, as it states here, Uniform Certificate of Authority Application for Guam unless a different application form is prescribed by the by the commissioner. So the commissioner can come in and say, oh, here, this is a form I want you to apply within, and I think this is too restrictive. I think this is a special interest bill and I think it does a disservice to our people by making insurance, keeping insurance expensive on this island. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Fisher, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I guess my observation and concern is somewhat similar to Senator San Nicholas's. In the bill, I'm referring to page two of the bill, at line nine, where we have the clause, unless a different application form is prescribed by the commissioner. My question is, does this allow the commissioner to create a form that does not meet the requirements of 15103? I would like to pose that question, ma'am, to the author.
Will the author yield to that question?
Yes, I do. So the purpose, so if you look at the amended bill, so this is improved language from the amended bill. The amended bill states unless otherwise instructed by the insurance commissioner. So that to me also, I was concerned about the discretionary power and potential use of bias. And so I changed the language to unless a different application form is prescribed by the commissioner, with a thought in mind that there might be, there might be time that it's needed to implement this process, so that there might be interim application or maybe keeping the current application process in place. But being that, it seems that the insurance companies are open to this and are ready for it, I can take that section out. That that only was there to ensure that there was a process in place prior to this being implemented. So that, I mean, I'm open to changing that to prior to implementation, the application form prescribed by the commissioner will be used for all applicants. Or we could just completely take that out and address that bias, the question of bias or discretionary power. So I, yeah, I too am concerned about that and that's why the language changed. And I am open to amendments. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much for that response. I'm encouraged by it. If we do strike unless a different application form is prescribed by the commissioner, if we strike that language, I could easily support the bill. I just worry that, as you know, ma'am, 15103 itself contains a laundry list of requirements that the application must be submitted with. It's it looks like a very difficult, actually, a very difficult application to put together. I imagine it's time-consuming and expensive for someone in the business of insurance to put that together. Nevertheless, I think that it's the requirements of 15103 are to make sure that the insurance market on Guam is safe. And that is, of course, a good, very good goal. And and to the author of the bill, just to reiterate, if we can strike that clause, beginning with unless and ending with word commissioner, I can support the bill. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, could I make?
Senator Fisher. All right. So is there any objection to Senator Fisher making an amendment without putting it in writing to strike the last clause of line nine? Seeing no objection, we will proceed. So Senator Fisher, can you please restate your amendment?
Yes, ma'am. I moved on the bill that we have before us on page two, line nine, the last clause, I move to strike unless a different application form is prescribed by the commissioner. To strike that clause.
All right. The amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? If not, Senator Fisher may close on the amendment.
No, thank you, ma'am.
All right, let's wait. So on the amendment, to to strike the words on line nine, page two, unless a different application form is prescribed by the commissioner, is there any objection to striking those words? Seeing no objection, that amendment is passed.
Thank you, ma'am. Nothing further.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. On the bill, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the bill? If not, the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to thank, take this opportunity to thank my colleagues for their thoughtful contributions and discussion on Bill 124-37. It is clear that we all share a commitment to ensuring Guam's regulatory systems and particularly our vital insurance and sector are both efficient and effective in protecting the interests of the people of Guam. Bill 124-37 strikes a balance. It's about leveraging the modern tools to streamline our insurance licensing process while ensuring local control and accountability remain at the forefront. Bill 124-37 aligns Guam with the National Association of Insurance Commissioners' best practices, standardizing the application process while retaining the highest standards of regulatory scrutiny. Through this bill, we've addressed concerns in the public hearing and on the floor today, and I'm very thankful for that. And just to reiterate, the final decision-making authority is retained with the insurance commissioner as should be. Public transparency is enhanced and Guam retains the flexibility to even impose stricter local requirements if needed. Bill 124 represents progress, progress towards a more efficient regulatory framework that is in step with the times, but is deeply still deeply rooted in the values of accountability, transparency, and public trust. I'm confident that these changes will not only improve the insurance industry, but would also benefit every consumer and business that relies on a stable, reliable insurance coverage here in Guam. I ask for the support of my colleagues in passing Bill 124-37. Together, we can bring positive change that modernizes our processes and preserves the protections of our people. Sidoos Massey. And I move to place it in the third reading pile. Sorry, I'd like to also add cosponsors, Senator Telo Taitegui, Senator Frank Blass, Senator Barnett, if anybody, Senator Fisher? Okay, anybody else who would like to be, I guess everyone else unless they choose not to?
All right, there's a motion to add Senators Taitegui, Frank Blass, Chris Barnett, Tom Fisher as sponsors, and then everyone else. Is there any objection to that motion? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. And on the motion to place the bill as amended and substituted on the floor onto the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. All right, we're going to begin now with Bill 174-37 COR. This bill is primarily sponsored by Senator Roy A.B. Canata. Senator Canata, you are recognized. Bill 174-37.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Of course, we had this bill heard in a previous session and we wanted to do some more checks and balances. We referred it back to the committee and thankful for the committee's work and its swift replacement so that we can have it heard. So Bill number 174-37 COR, as amended by the Committee on Environmental Revenue, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement and Statistics Research and Planning and Further amended by the committee. So an act to amend subsection 3102 of chapter three, title 16, Guam Code annotated, relative to creating an eight-year driver's license, is issued that aligns with the maximum renewal period allowed under the Real ID Act. Again, my intent for this legislation was to simply just give another option for people to mitigate the waits and lines out there. We still continuously have at this time a long waiting line outside of DRT. So the intent of this legislation is to hopefully give some option for people to renew their license or whoever is going to start getting a new license, again, if this bill passes, that they have the option to get eight-year driver's license and that their identification is recognized for eight years. And if they want to renew, they can renew for another eight years. And we've already heard this bill in a public hearing, so, yeah. DRT has already helped the committee as well draft the amended language. Thank you.
Sidoos Massey, Senator. If you concluded, then is there any other senator who'd like to speak on the bill, on the motion to place it? And third, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Good morning, gentlemen, Anas Sidoos, Speaker. I stand in rising support of this Bill 174-37 COR, and I applaud the author for proposing this extended period of a Guam driver's license being valid. This change will mean a more efficient process and can reduce both the wait times for our residents and reduce the workload on our already overburdened employees. I hope that the amendments to require the rulemaking won't cause unnecessary delays, but I do certainly appreciate that this amendment to Bill 174 ensures any extension granted through this measure is in compliance with the with the Real ID Act. So, Madam Speaker, anyone who has to deal with the Department of Motor Vehicle knows that despite the best efforts of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, some still, some of our residents still need to reserve a whole day to be absolutely sure that they will be able to be seen by department staff. This is a luxury many working families cannot afford, especially for those who have a part-time job without any leave benefits. And I believe, I personally believe that by extending the valid period of a driver's license to eight years will mean that the next time someone comes in to renew their license, fewer people will be in line, fewer employees will be needed to efficiently, efficiently process the license renewals and we can take those saved resources and direct them elsewhere like to car registrations, new license applications or to the other divisions under the Department of Revenue and Taxation. So, Madam Speaker, I, it is my hope that our colleagues support this effort. Some may say it's simple, but it truly being in compliance with the Real ID Act and knowing that it will help DRT in giving a longer period of time for our residents who can drive on the road with, with this license, giving them the opportunity to just have that, that driver's license for a longer period of time. And believe it or not, it is, Madam Speaker, a privilege to drive on our roads, not, not a, not a mandate. So, thank you to the author for allowing me to be a part of this support. So, Senator Masi.
Sisus Masi, on the bill, is there any other senator who would like to speak on the bill? On the bill. Senator San Augustine, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I rise in support of this bill. Fortunately for me and a few that are here as veterans, we don't pay for driver's licenses, you know? But one of the beauties of this is, is for all, everybody on Guam. And as the people of Guam are listening, if you get a real ID, you get to travel to Hawaii without, not needing a passport, anywhere in the continental. So that, that's, that's one of the advantages. And I, I know this for a fact because I use my real ID whenever I travel. Never mind pulling out my passport, and though I have it in my right pocket, I just pull out my driver's license, real ID, and it's done. And there's been quite a few folks that unfortunately on Guam have not, not ever gotten and don't plan on getting a passport. They've just been lucky they haven't been forced to have to fly to Japan where they'll end up at the airport only. But one of the beauties of the real ID and extending it for eight years, my colleagues and for the people of Guam, currently the licenses are only three and five. If you get a real ID, driver's license, it's eight years. That's the beauty. Just hopefully you don't forget in eight years, need to renew it. Because the rule of thumb in driver's license that if you don't renew within 365 days, you start all over again as if you're just applying for a driver's license. But other than that, I fully support this, this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator, on the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Sinicolas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I also stand in support of the bill. I, I, I think I have one of those renewals at five years, just such a convenient thing for me. Yeah. But, but it, you know, I know the hardworking folks up at Rev and Tax. You know, they, the lines up there can be horrendous. I, I think coming in once every eight years is a, is a, is a plus and would alleviate some of the, the stress on our, on our workers and, and also, you know, be such a relief to us who don't have to go through that, that, those long lines. I, I just had my license renewed and it was done online. And it was a, a process, you had to go get a eye exam and everything. But having an extended license for eight years, eight-year period is a, is a, is a big improvement to the, the way we, we conduct business on, on Guam with regard to driver's license. So I stand in support and I, I thank the author. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator, on the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to speak on the bill? If not, then, Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So, yeah, I, our committee, my committee worked on this bill and I'm glad that there was some clarity that was brought since the session, since it was first discussed in the previous session, a, a previous session. And one of the big changes was that originally, the, the original bill wanted to make the driver's license a eight-year renewal period. And so I'm, I'm very thankful that the sponsor decided to add an option to an eight-year period. So that kind of helps clarify, clarify, makes it, it simplifies the, the amendments of this bill. So, yeah, again, you know, the, it provides options for, for those drivers out there. The other thing, the other policy decision was, of course, the, the fee. And so if you look at the fee, it's, it's actually a savings compared to the three-year, five-year driver's licenses. And of course, the, the cost of having to, to renew at a shorter frequency is, is eliminated with the longer period of time. In regards to the real ID, of course, this bill does not mandate the real ID, of course, that is required of, through, through the federal government. And that's something that DRT has to be able to be ready for because by May of next year, we have to be real ID compliant. And so that's something that I would need to work with the DRT to ensure that, that they're ready and it's not all of us, you know, a quick implementation. That implementation is done starting today. Like, we, we need to make sure that the, the infrastructure is available for, to make this happen. So, yes, so I did, thanks to the sponsor that allows, who allowed me to be a cosponsor of this bill. And, yeah, I think this is, this will be good for, for those, for our community. So, Sisus Masi.
Sisus Masi. On the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, again. I want to thank the committee chair, Senator Perez, and the members of our committee for their improvements on this bill and her staff and team and their swift amending, amendments of this, this bill. I just want to again thank my cosponsors, Senator Joe S. San Augustine, Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Speaker Theresa Laje, Senator Chris Barnett, Senator Duane Sinicolas, Senator Amanda Shelton, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Senator Willam A. Parkinson, and Tomas J. Fisher. I, so again, thank you again to all of you guys for your co-sponsorship and teamwork. Bill 174-37 is all about making the driver's license easier to deal with. It aims to modernize the system by offering licenses that are last, that will last longer so that people don't have to renew them as often. This helps both residents and the Department of Revenue and Taxation. The bill introduced, introduces an eight-year license, giving the drivers more flexibility to pick what works best for them. This change should make things run smoother and be more convenient and matching up with federal rules. In short, passing this bill shows that we want more efficient and friendly government processes. By supporting this bill, we can make sure that things are easier for our Guam drivers and help DRT handle its, its workload easier. I hope my fellow colleagues will support this bill and we can make better, a better licensing, licensing system for everyone in Guam. With that, I renew my motion, Madam Speaker, to place Bill 174-37 as amended by the committee and further amended in the third reading file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Masi, Senator, on that motion to place Bill number 174 as amended and further amended on the floor to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We're now on Bill number 193-37 LS. Senators San Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 193-37 as amended by the Committee on Environmental Revenue, Taxation, Labor, Procurement and Statistics Research and Planning on the third reading file, and I wish to briefly discuss the measure.
Please proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 193-37, an act to add a new chapter 10 and chapter 11 to Division 1, title 11, Guam Code Annotated, and add a new chapter 98 to Division 4, title 10, Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing electronic nicotine delivery system, ends product tax and licensing which shall be cited as the ends exercise, exercise act of 2023 and establish a Department of Revenue and Taxation revolving fund and a Guam Memorial Hospital Authority revolving fund. I'd like to also recognize that cosponsors is, is my vice chair, Senator Telo Titegui, Senator Roy Canata, and Senator Duane Sinicolas. The emergence of electronic nicotine delivery system has created a regulatory void in Guam. These products, including vape products, have gained popularity, but we have noticed that there's a lack of oversight necessary to protect public health. To address this issue, this bill proposes a comprehensive regulatory framework. Bill 193's primary objective is to establish clear guidelines for the sale and distribution of ends products on, in, in Guam. By implementing a regulatory framework, the government can ensure that these products are sold responsibly and that the consumers are adequately informed about their potential risks. In addition to regulation, the bill also proposes a taxation system for ends products. The proposed exercise tax will start at 10% and gradually increase to 20% over time. This revenue will be allocated to the Department of Revenue and Taxation and the Guam Memorial Hospital, both for which play crucial roles in the community in regards to health and regulatory compliance. To ensure transparency and accountability, the bill requires regular reports on expenditures and fund allocation. This will allow the public, the public to monitor how the tax revenue is being used and how the government accountable, accountable for these funds. Passing this bill is essential for Guam to address the growing popularity of the ends products and protect the health and well-being of our citizens by establishing a regulatory framework while at the same time being able to generate revenue for our people. We can create a balance between public health and economic interest. Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator San Augustine. Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Joe, would you like to move close? Senator Titegui, on the main motion. You are recognized at this time. Senator Titegui, you are acknowledged at this time.
Well, at this time, Madam Speaker, I ask just for a short recess while we get the amendment because I do have an amendment for this bill.
We will take a moment, recess. Ymina Trenta Shetin, LS, La Turen, Guam, is back from recess. Senator Telo, I understand you have an amendment. You may proceed.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. And you know, I of course stand in full support as the first co-sponsor of this legislation. We all know that we were seeing a huge decline in funds into the Healthy Futures Funds because of the drop in purchasing of, you know, cigarettes. And now it's moving over to a different kind, another habit, which is vaping. And we're losing a lot of funds. Well, we're not being able to tax this type of funds. And we're trying to correct this with this bill. I mean, it was even brought to our attention by those in the industry of the vaping industry, that they have no problem with having this taxed. So myself, as well as, you know, the author of the legislation, has been talking to the industry and asking them, you know, well, how do you feel about, you know, putting a tax at this amount and then increasing it further down the road to about 20%, 10% first and then 20% thereafter? And they had no problem with that. They understand the situation. They understand that this is a sin tax. We have that on alcohol. We have that on tobacco. And this is nicotine. Madam Speaker, we had support from everyone from Guam Behavioral Wellness. We had support from the administration. We had support from public health on this legislation. I believe even Guam Memorial came and testified in support because, of course, some of the funds would be going directly to them. This bill is a long time coming. It's been worked on, gosh, I think, over a year and a half. We've been trying to find a way to make this correct in moving forward so that it's not too complicated. It boils down to it's a sin tax. It's for tobacco and nicotine. And that the funds that are generated from this tax is going to go to areas in most need. Everything from enforcement to revenue tax for enforcement. Every place from Department of Public Health and Social Services for programs, education. On tobacco, 5% of monies collected under the tax levy by this chapter to deposit into the Youth Tobacco Education and Prevention Fund. 30% in the monies, and this is important, you know, 30% of the monies collected under the tax levy by this chapter shall be deposited in the Department of Revenue and Taxation revolving fund to assist with the enforcement within the compliance branch. A lot of things were thought about this legislation to ensure, not just that we capture these taxes that once we were able to use, but to ensure we have this enforcement in place. And I do know a good colleague of mine who is going to be making an amendment to incorporate not just the Guam Memorial Hospital, but also the Healthy Futures Funds. And we've been finding out every year, I guess, it's been almost 12 million less. Every year, short in the Healthy Futures Fund. And if you know what the Healthy Futures Fund is for, it has to do with helping people with cancer prevention, awareness programs. It helps with cancer patients and breast cancer facilities. There's other areas. Sorry, my computer just went. The Guam Memorial Hospital ensures that the funding that goes to there from the Healthy Futures Fund, they receive quite a bit of it, but it helps with their operations, repairs and maintenance, even their vendors' payments. And this bill will also contribute to that as well. But all in all, Madam Speaker, this bill is long overdue, long overdue. I'm glad that we're finally addressing this legislation. I do, though, Madam Speaker, have an amendment. And this amendment is on page 13, lines 16 and 19, to amend section 10401D of the bill, and it's introduced by myself and Senator Joe Sinagastin. Letter D, GBHWC, then underlined the area, "In partnership with DRT, shall promongate administrative rules and regulations to comply with the mandates of 10404 of this act within 90 days of enactment. Said rules and regulations shall be implemented 12 months after Elsotun, Guam's approval." We did call DRT to ensure that this timeline can be met, and they gave us a green light. In fact, if I'm not mistaken, I think they even gave us a green light of 60 days. But just to ensure that, you know, because they're in partnership with Guam Behavioral Wellness, their calendar might not be as freed up, or you know how difficult it is when you get a lot of chefs in the kitchen cooking, you know, they all have to be there, and it's kind of hard to have quorum sometimes, as we experience here. So that's what the amendment does. It just incorporates that DR, Department of Revenue Taxation taxation is part of the promulgating of these rules and regulations and takes it from 80 to 90. Because like I said, it's about time we put this legislation through to capture these taxes that have been slipping through our fingers for years and years. So I thank you and ask my colleagues for their support on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Telo. On the amendment, as proffered by Senator Telo Tydegui and Senator Sinagastin, are there anyone wishing to speak? Senator Sabina, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support this amendment, especially because Guam Behavioral Health and DRT are ready. They collaborate with the signer inspections, which are required to ensure that there is no underage cell of nicotine and ends products. I do support the reduction in 90 days. I believe Guam Behavioral Health has, you know, has a template potentially that they can use. They have existing language that they can use, that was currently used for their grants, the SAMSA grants, grants, sorry. Just also, I wanted to provide some information to the public. So this particular section was highlighted to for promulgation of rules and regs, because this is something different. So if you look at the bill itself, a lot of it was utilized, Chapter 6, Title 11, which is the Tobacco Control Act. And being that this is the Ends Exercise, was it the Ends Exercise Act of 2023, a lot of the language and we tried to harmonize it with that particular section and keeping the intent of the bill. And so what this particular section does, it's the prohibition of ends products, distribution of ends products to persons under 21 years. And really, it's about those adults that provide ends products to minors are in violation of this, of this law or this bill. And so that's what's different. This is a different addition and something you won't see in the Tobacco Control Act. So just a point of information, but I do support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Tydegui, if I may, just because of the amendment for logistical purposes, DRT, you know, may be needing to be spelled out. So if you can just allow for legal to make the technical corrections on this amendment, too, I'll address that. And then this.
That being said, Madam Speaker, I motion that legal create any, correct any kind of grammatical or numbering system to allow legal to do this. Yes.
Yes.
Any amendments needed to?
On that motion to accept the TTT and Joe Sinagastin amendment, and also to allow legal for technical corrections, are there any objections? Yes?
I do want to close on the.
Oh, I do apologize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for allowing me just a short closure. I'd just like to thank, you know, Senator Perez for the work she did on this legislation. As I said, it was a long time coming because there were several concerns about it and how to address the ends. How are we going to find these taxes, collect these taxes? Is it going to come in through the wholesale? Is it going to come in through retail? So there was a lot of back and forth on there to make sure that we did it right. Now, this is not a perfect bill, Madam Speaker. It's a bill that, you know, it's new. It might stumble along the way, but I'm sure that we're going to be moving forward quickly, quickly to address any concerns later on that we're having. I mean, even when we did the tobacco tax law, there was issues. I also like to thank, Madam Speaker, in closing on this amendment, I'd just like to thank those in the industry who did not fight us at all for having it being taxed. They realized that this product is going to be more expensive out there. And they want to contribute to the community and to help the community in any kind of programs out there, outreach programs, especially when it comes to our youth. And I like to commend them for the work they did with Senator Sinagastin and myself in creating this legislation. And this amendment, Madam Speaker, I appreciate my colleagues again for their support on it.
Thank you, Senator Tydegui. Again, on the motion as proffered by Senator Tydegui and Senator Sinagastin, and also to allow for legal, technical corrections by legal, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries.
I'm good. Thank you for allowing me just to close on that last end. So I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tydegui. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Senator Sinagastin, you may close. Did you want to speak, Senator Barnett? I do apologize, Senator Sinagastin. He got it in the.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, it's such a, this is, I mean, line is like 100-page, so surprised no one's going to talk about it. But I just did have some concerns or questions for the author, if he would yield. And I guess just in my read of the bill, and maybe, I'm hoping the good Senator Frandjigo could enlighten me if I'm mistaken. But for me, the issue with us not taxing vape and ends, whatever it's called, is basically people have migrated from smoking cigarettes over to the vape and the e-cigarettes and all those things. And what that has led to is, as we all know, a decline in the Healthy Futures Fund, which goes to, among other things, GDOE interscholastic sports. And so I guess my question for the author is, under this tax scheme as laid out in the bill, would the Healthy Futures Fund receive any of the proceeds from either the tax or the fees and penalties collected as proposed in the bill?
No, they wouldn't be receiving anything. As a matter of fact, as is identified in the bill, there is for Department of Revenue and Taxation and GMH. GMH is in need of funds. And I understand that some of my colleagues have approached me about the Healthy Future Fund, finding ways to give them money. Well, one of the biggest issues or concerns we have is that every year when we do the budget, we're trying to figure out, how do we get all the percentage to all the other agencies that are entitled to Healthy Future Funds? With this, once it's established the amount that GMH is getting, then we can start adjusting now what is in the Healthy Future Fund where we can get it to the Guam Cancer Care. So we can give it to the other agencies that are in dire need. And that was the intent why we identified specifically on the vape, on the ends, on this bill, it would go to DRT and GMH. That's the main reason for that. But it's subject to, later on, to, if you want to change it, we can change it, to divvy it up somehow. But that's the whole intent.
Sisus Massey. Yeah, and I think that's been the issue. Again, as people have got off the, what do they call it, traditional tobacco and gone to the e-cigarettes, we've seen that decline. And I think the estimates that we heard when we were discussing the budget was that the Healthy Futures Fund has declined, I think the number was 11 by $11 million. So that's a significant loss that has led us to scramble again to appropriate money to cancer patients. And I just think considering the shortages in the Healthy Futures Fund, the shortages and the tracking of the fund are directly related to people going from cigarettes to vape and e-cigarettes, which we aren't taxing. And so that whole stream of revenues hasn't been captured, and that's what's impacted the Healthy Futures Fund negatively. And so I know that the author had said that this would be something we could consider at a future time, but I've actually prepped an amendment that I'm hoping my colleagues would support. Now, I know that the bill establishes a Guam Memorial Hospital Authority revolving fund. And I'm looking at page 20 here, where it's laid out how the tax proceeds will be divvied up. It's 5% of monies collected under the tax levied by this chapter shall be deposited to the Health and Human Services Fund for DPHSS. Then there's another 5% of monies collected under the tax levied by the chapter to be deposited to the Youth Tobacco Education and Prevention Fund. And then 30% of the monies collected under the tax levied by the chapter shall be deposited to DRT revolving fund to assist with enforcement within the compliance branch. And then 60% of the tax proceeds would go to this newly established Guam Memorial Hospital Authority revolving fund. And I think in having met with these vape industry people and met with representatives from DRT, I think that we are kind of flying blind, because I had asked the folks at Customs and Quarantine, you know, if we're to come up with an estimate relative to how much vape is coming in, how much is being sold, and how much would we realize in the tax revenue? They said they have no idea. And that's because a lot of these vape industry people not only bring it in wholesale, they sell it retail. And then you have these individual businesses bringing in products that are, for whatever reason, escaping custom and quarantine, or maybe customs and quarantine. reason, escaping custom and quarantine, or maybe customs and quarantine and other people who are at the ports of entry just don't have that mechanism, aren't tracking, you know, for example, 500 disposable vapes sold at this amount would lead to this amount of tax revenue. So I think we're kind of flying in the dark here, and I just want to ensure that we address the real issue that not taxing vape and e-cigs has created, and that's an impact, negative impact to the Healthy Futures Fund. So I prepared an amendment. I'm not sure if it's ready. So can I ask for a moment's recess, Madam Speaker?
Yes. So we'll take a one-minute recess.
We're back from recess. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Si, dos, masi, Madam Speaker. Just needed a little time to finish prepping the amendment, so I'd like to motion that we recess for lunch.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will recess until 2:00 p.m. Recess.